There you go.
Whoops.
I got half my curtain there.
Thank you.
Penny?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And we'll start the meeting tonight with approval of the minutes from the December meeting. So if the council members have all had a chance to read through the minutes.
I have read them and I move to approve the minutes as presented for the December council meeting.
Wonderful. Do we have a second?
Second, Matt.
Hopefully that's Scott with the second there. Sorry, Sharon.
Okay.
So we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Sounds like it passes unanimously.
This is Attorney Willoughby, and I don't know what procedures have been, but I just want to make the town council aware that when everything is 100% electronic, that you have to do roll call votes for every vote. So I just want to make sure that you're in compliance.
Thank you. So that was, if we can have that motion placed again, if you'll say your name as you. Pete, I know you're making the motion.
I would say, do the people who make the motion have to also be included in that?
You guys are covered just when the votes, the votes have to be by vote.
So when we vote, that I need to say, Josh, then you'll need to ask for everyone's name for a vote?
Yeah, it's a pain, but I have to do it on every single vote.
Okay, no problem. So.
Thank you for clarifying.
So the first person makes a motion, the second person seconds it, and then I roll call the rest of them?
That's right.
Okay, so should we make the motion again?
No, you have a valid first motion and a second. You just have to take a roll call after discussion and when they're ready to vote, you just take a roll call and call each other their names.
Okay, Mr. Buzard.
Yeah, I made the motion, but aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's Buzard, so Cox, so Ms. Sharon Greilich?
Aye.
And Jennifer, do you have a vote?
Aye, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on to the fund report. Josh, I can't make the motion, but I do get to vote still.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure, because when we say unanimously carried, I wasn't sure, because we've always done it the same way for 12 years. Even during our 2020 COVID.
Right, but it's nice to have that fixed, so.
It is.
I don't see a fund report this evening.
Did anybody else get a fund report in their packet?
Maybe, oh, nope, I missed it. That's my mistake. Has everyone had a chance to review the fund report? I'm going to take a minute to look over, and Josh, I'll ask you if there's anything that stands out specifically.
I just said for the AFR, the annual financial report, we are moving the COVID CARES Act fund. We're going to utilize that money as stated last year, but remember it was received in this year. So it's sort of a cleanup for the end of the year. That would be the only thing.
Okay.
I move to accept the fund report as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. He?
Aye.
And Mr. So Cox?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have everyone's vote there?
Ms. Greilich? I thought we did.
Aye.
Who made the motion and?
I made the motion and Ms. Greilich seconded.
She seconded, so Sharon's already voted there.
Yep.
I'm sorry, you guys, I'm a little preoccupied. I'm trying to get Kate into our meeting. She's having a little difficulty, so I'm like, yeah, just give me, just deal with me for just a second.
Well, we'll wait for just a moment then.
Thanks, I'm just pacing it on here. Okay, now I have my full attention.
So moving on to payment of the bills, and that I know I did have, and I did look through. Has everyone else had a chance to look at the accounts payable register? Let's see, Scott nodding, Pete nodding. Sharon, have you had a chance to look that through? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the accounts payable register from December of 2021?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we've got Scott with the motion, Pete with the second.
Ms. He?
Mrs. He? Aye.
Mrs. Greilich?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. We do have a little bit of a change in the agenda for this evening, because we have a guest here to speak. So Matt, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and tell us what you're here to present to us tonight.
Thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Dreymaier. I'm a sergeant detective at La Porte City Police Department. I'm also the FOP Lodge 54's president. Today, I'm talking to you to kind of inform you about LIT and that we're working, trying to work with the county council on trying to get this passed to improve first responders throughout La Porte County. Some of the highlighted problems we're running into is it's not the best times to be an officer or find new people that want to become officers to replace the ones going out the door from retirement or leaving to better themselves at a different department. What I mean by that is Michigan City's down, was down 16 officers as of a few weeks ago. They just hired in, I believe, four or five, but they've yet to go to the academy. So they're, for a good half of a year, not going to be worth too much for Michigan City, but that still leaves them down about 12. La Porte PD was down five. We lost them to South Bend. Michigan City lost a lot to Cheshireton and surrounding agencies too. And when we lose good qualified officers to surrounding agencies and before they retire, it makes things difficult, because we're in a day and age where nobody wants to be an officer. So trying to find people to replace these good qualified officers that we already had is very difficult. We're getting applications of people that we wouldn't even usually waste our time with. And now we're having to make exceptions or lower the bar, expectation bar, just to fill the spots. And as you know, that's a bad liability thing that you're introducing into the police world. So not only is it with law enforcement, I mean, you guys have probably heard the troubles with EMS and manpower issues and stuff like that. La Porte County is kind of behind the bar when it comes to comparable salaries to their surrounding agencies. And again, like I said, South Bend got five of ours and several, we had two of ours go to Cheshireton. So we're down actually seven from transfers, and then Michigan City had a couple, Willie Henderson being the most recent to Cheshireton. So what our mayor's trying to propose and get the cooperation of the county council is local income tax increase. We call it LIT, L-I-T. Currently, we're at 0.95% as what our local income tax is based off of right now. Some of our surrounding counties are, like Star Counties at 1.71, St. Joe's at 1.75, Jasper and Blaskai are 2.8. And that's just our surrounding agencies. Statewide, on average, is 1.78. So we fall well below everyone else. And this proposal of the LIT is for first responders only, that it would go specific to first responders, so fire, EMS, jail, hazmat, and so on. Out of 96 counties in Indiana, 72 actively have a form of LIT. And when you have those 72, La Porte County goes all the way at the bottom with only six counties below us. And those counties are the ones that are down in the southern part of state. We're talking Warwick, Pike, Spencer, and Jefferson. And then we have Porter County, which is below us at 0.5. However, they're talking to Baker Tilly right now, because they're running into problems themselves. So they're looking at, intercan the same idea. What we're looking, what the mayor is proposing to happen is our income tax, our local income tax to go from 0.95 to 1.45, which is, you know, a half a percent. And what that means is for somebody that makes $20,000 a year, you're talking $2 a week difference for them, or $96 a year. Or if somebody's making 60 grand a year, you know, it's $300 a year, or $6.25 a week difference. And what that's going to do is be able to give us the resources to better pay our first responders, so they don't leave to other surrounding agencies. And we're tasked with trying to weed through all these unqualified people to fill the positions. What does this all mean if we were to get the 0.5%? Well, La Porte County would, La Porte County alone, not including the municipalities or Trail Creek or anything, La Porte County alone would get 6.7 million benefit out of it. That's a lot of money that they could throw into the jail, EMS, hazmat, jail deputies, the merit road officers, and so on, any first responder role. Michigan City would receive 3.7 million. So you can see where they can use that to help maintain their offices. Like I said, they were 16 behind as of a few weeks ago. La Porte City would receive 1.8 million from this. Trail Creek, and I know this is what you guys might hear, is 91,686. And then Long Beach, 220,000. That's all I brought. We got, I have it all figured out for like Kingsford Heights and all those Kingsbury and all those other smaller townships, but I don't have, unable to have the presentation in front of me, so I dropped some information down real quick. But what this affects is, like, for people draw social security, it does not affect them at all. They don't have to pay any into the local income tax. And it's also, it's also based off of taxable income. So it's not your gross income, so whatever deductibles, health insurance and stuff like that that qualify, it only hits what affects the taxable income. My understanding, and I could be wrong, I was able to get some information that Trail Creek basically is in contract with Cool Spring Fire. Is that, is that correct? Somewhere around 90,000, I believe. And I mean, with this, that would completely cover that contract for Cool Spring. You would be obtaining 91,000. That's pretty much all I have as far as what I have to say about LIT and how it would benefit La Porte County. I mean, we don't want to fall behind with law enforcement or any first responders. Like I said, with the lack of qualified people that are interested in doing the job anymore, it'd be, it'd be pretty, it'd be pretty bad to try to replace them with what we have applying as of today. So we need to try to retain what we have while we have them.
The only question is, so you're saying that it would be 91,000 additional if we were to get the half a percent?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And that would be the same, so 6.7 additional, 6.7 million additional for La Porte County, 3.7 million additional for Michigan City, and 1.8 million additional for La Porte?
Yes, sir.
Oh, wow, okay.
So then those funds are only to be used for first responders. That doesn't mean that we can rework our budget around that to take any other funding to use it for anything else, correct?
So let's just say this, it's the best way to describe it. Say you're putting, I'll just use La Porte's budget at this time.
Perfect.
Say we have 1.8 million that we're throwing towards first responders right now, and we were able to get LIT passed, and then we got 1.8, we can now take that towards the first responders, and then the money that they're already contributing can go somewhere else. So, yes, but.
Okay. And then what would we need to do as a town? What are you looking for from us?
Support, just support on the idea.
We're going to have to ask the obvious question.
Yeah, so we're talking to the county council, and ultimately, we can be on board. Michigan City can be on board, Trail Creek, Long Beach, everybody can be on board, but it all comes down to the county council and how they want to vote. If they vote no, despite how we want, it doesn't get passed. And that's why, if you were to support this and let them know that your support is in behind, because it's been said that they would only support it if the communities in the whole support this, then we can move forward with it.
Okay.
And our first, our first demonstration to the county council is going to be Monday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM is their county council meeting. And then the voting is on the agenda for February 28th.
Okay, and same time, right? Still 6:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
And so from us, would you be looking for us to attend that, those meetings? Or just to write a letter? Or what, what are you looking for specifically? What show of support do you want?
Yeah, yeah, minimum writing a letter would be fantastic. I mean, it would be absolutely great. If you would like to attend, that's just icing on the cake.
Okay.
I feel that Trail Creek in itself would benefit, obviously, with the 91 grand, as with any community. So if you can get support from these communities, just to show, it would be very helpful.
Okay, so does anyone else have a question or comments or anything for Matt?
Would that be?
Josh, you're muted. Scott, go ahead.
Would that be, you already answered it, but just like with the CAGIT stuff back in the 80s, they said, oh, it's going to be short term. Understand that. Then again, it's been some 30-some years, and you call that short term. Will this be 100% locked in for first responders only?
Yes, yes. It's the way, the way it's worded, Baker Tilly was able to, it's first responders only, this one, this hike.
Council, this is Chris Willoughby. I just, to support what Matt is saying, essentially, you're going to pass a resolution at some point or an ordinance that has a separate fund for these funds to be directed to with, that are restricted for expenditures in the future.
Thank you. Everyone understands that? Yes, okay. Josh, did you have a comment or question?
I did. I may have missed it, just taking notes. But can we, can those funds be utilized towards like equipment or anything first responders may need, or just salaries?
Yep, no, equipment, yep. The jail could actually build a new jail with it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, problem.
That sounds like it's.
If you wanted, if you wanted to write a letter, I don't know if you have contacts. I'm sure you guys have contacts with certain county council. Okay, then, yeah, if you just address them with that letter, that would be fantastic.
Okay, okay.
I know we're having a meeting tomorrow afternoon also, and I'm sure it'll come up, but I plan on being there Monday and on the 28th.
Thank you, sir. I have contacted several jail officers, because this affects them too. You've probably seen social media explode after their ARP money bonus proposal. And it wasn't, because everybody looks at it as a Band-Aid, because essentially what it is, it's money not guaranteed for tomorrow. And they didn't, they didn't, the county employees didn't receive that very well. So I'm trying to get everybody on board to show support as far as that. So I got jail deputies, I'm trying to get the road guys on board, and yeah, Dick, if you can come along too, that'd be great.
Okay.
I don't know how it feels, but I know I throw my full support behind this. I know just because we're having issues right now hiring officers in Trail Creek because of the whole salary issue. So, yeah, it has my full support 100%. I'm sure that the people of Trail Creek would most likely agree, because I know they want coverage in town.
Thank you, Pete.
So would anyone like to, I don't know if we can propose the resolution now, or if we need to wait till new business? Mr. Willoughby, would you like to advise us on that?
Well, with regard to support, maybe the council can simply authorize you to draft a letter. You know, the resolution or those things in the future with regard to the fund, you don't need that now.
We don't need that yet.
Yes, so that would just be with regard to restricting funds. But if Matt is saying that a letter of support, and then obviously Chief Marshall's going to attend. So I think if they authorize you to pen a letter on behalf of the council, that will be sufficient.
Okay, council?
Absolutely, you have my support 100%.
Thank you. Scott?
Mine also.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'm behind it.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so then tomorrow I'll write that letter, and should I send that over to Mayor Dermody's office then, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I could, I could take it over there tomorrow, or I could take it.
I'm sorry? I think we lost Matt.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name, my name is Matt Dreymaier. I know it's backwards. Yeah, it's backwards. Kind of spell it. I'll pop that into a map. Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
Like I said, I could take it tomorrow or Monday, whichever works for you. That way we get it in the right hands.
Fantastic.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get that taken care of. Thank you for being here tonight and presenting that information for us. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you guys for allowing me.
Anytime.
Thanks, Matt. Good seeing you.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Bye.
All right, so moving, moving on from the LIT presentation, we're going to ask if there's any correspondence?
There is actually. It comes from Val Canola at 204 Oriole Trail. And it was mailed on January 10th, and it just is a simple express that says, "We have been trying for over five years to get our street repaired. Would you please consider this this year?" Thank you, Val Canola. She lives on Oriole.
Just going to make sure to repeat Oriole Trail, okay.
204 Oriole.
I'm going to co-sign on that. Oriole Trail is in very poor condition, especially from her house down to Meadowlark.
Okay. Duly noted. Now, I know that, well, that's something we'll have to plan out with our, our street plan for the next year. Okay, so no other correspondence other than Mrs. Canola? We'll move on to the MS4 report.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, last time I told you that there was the meeting with the SWCD proposal for taking on the MS4 operations on the 6th, and then we had our meeting today. I'll get this paperwork to Josh that is their proposal, so you have a chance to look it over. But basically, what they have proposed is dividing what Rick and Ariana did between three people. Their district administrative manager, Chris Havens, would be designated the MS4 coordinator for purposes of reporting enforcement, which I'll get back to, again, communication with IDEM, create and monitor MS4 reporting hotline, manage reports, review plans, take in fees, and so forth. Then Nicole Messicar, who is their education coordinator, would handle the public outreach and education. And then they have a soil conservationist. His name is Michael Herman. He would be working in conjunction with the district manager with inspections and so forth, and, you know, responding to complaints. The one thing they do not want to do is to have anything to do with enforcement, because that does not go along with their mission statement, we'll say. And this is something that still hasn't been ironed out. There are several other details I'll get to. And then there's a breakdown in this proposal of budget and so forth. As far as the enforcement is concerned, they want someone else to do it. Apparently, Elkhart County, this is how they run their MS4 program, through their SWCD, and then they outsource to another county employee to do the enforcement. What has been discussed is that in regards to enforcement, that part would fall on each entity. I think in our case, would probably be the town engineer. Mike Poland, who's the building inspector and was our former president for our board, says that there has been some discussion in the county about creating a code enforcement officer that would run through his department, and then they would handle enforcement. But my question is, when and if this is even going to happen? The other thing too is we would have to redo our memorandum of understanding that would include Soil and Water Conservation District and outline what their responsibilities would be, what the individual entity's responsibilities would be. I, one thing I was very particular on, because during the January 6th meeting, there was discussion about everybody would just choose off a menu. And I, today I expressed my conviction that the way it's already set up based on population is how the amounts that each entity pays is determined, that for us and for Long Beach, that cannot change, because you simply cannot afford it. And what's to say if they suddenly decide in two years to raise those prices in 15% or something like that? But that's one thing that I am sticking to. So let's see, anyway, they will be presenting this proposal to the county commissioners next week for their approval to present it to the county council. As I said before, this is, this is what is going to happen. I was a little bit more reassured today. I did not think that the presentation that they gave last on the 6th was very well prepared. Because there were other things that I was concerned with, like is our budget going to remain separate from Soil and Water? Don Lodi, who is the president of Soil and Water Conservation District, assured me today that they will remain separate budgets, so we will still have control over what is spent for our program. Let's see, sorry, I'm trying to read this in kind of bad light. I also had concerns about the soil conservationist, what qualified him to do inspections and so forth. And Mr. Lodi assured me again that he had had a long conversation with Michael, and that he thinks he's very bright, and he will get certified and trained for MS4, just like Rick did through a program, and that he will be able to do the job. Let's see. My other concern too was, along with Soil and Water Conservation's other districts, especially in the summertime, which was always Rick's busiest time, that things would be covered and nothing, you know, would fall through the cracks. Of course, there's going to be some type of learning curve for a little while with this, as we, you know, we get everything figured out. But again, Mr. Lodi assured me that he's, it sounds like he's going to be personally very involved in this. I still have some concerns about it, but I don't know what other options we have, really. If you want me to, I can reach out to IDEM, MS4, the state coordinator, to see if maybe possibly there's some way Trail Creek can opt out, if that's what you would like me to explore. But things are going to be happening very fast.
And if we opt out, then we do, we have to have our own MS4 program.
That's what I, that's what I don't know.
I don't think that we can afford to do that ourselves.
No, oh, no, absolutely not. No, oh, no, absolutely not. I just, I have concerns, I, and I was, like I said, I was somewhat better reassured this afternoon than when I left that first meeting this month. But I'm still weary of it, leary, excuse me, about it. You know, we accomplish, you know, we accomplish quite a bit on nothing, and I hate to see that go away, you know, I've been in this from the beginning, and, you know, it's it's kind of my little niche thing, you know, I've been there since the beginning of this.
Right, well, and you're very knowledgeable about it, so I guess my preference would be that we stay with, with the program for now. Any other council opinions there?
I did forget one other thing, Mike also told us at the January 6th meeting that he received a call from Jeff Wright, the city engineer of Michigan City, about exploring the possibility of them coming back, but I've had no update. Now I'm going to contact Mike tomorrow to see if that's still a possibility or not. Jerry, who's Littleport City, he was not very confident that that would happen. From what he had heard, but you know, again, nothing's official. So.
Okay.
That's kind of where we're at. But I will get the, this outline to you, so you have a chance to look it over and to Mr. Willoughby and to Tim, so that they can look it over and, you know, they kind of know what's going on.
Okay.
Also, too, the other thing too is we want to retain our own council, if possible.
Yes, Mr. Haas.
Kate, did you say that the county has someone that they, they could use for enforcement for the town?
Well, it's, it's this, it, it's this position that's been discussed, nothing has been decided, so we're, we're, that's the one thing, you know, right now. Not that there's a lot of code enforcement in Trail Creek, but, you know, we might have to designate someone within the town as the enforcement officer, and I think you being the town engineer, that would be the best person for the job.
For the, and you're specifically talking about strictly enforcement for MS4 matters, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if, if the county is going to provide a person that can do that for some type of fee to different communities, including the town of Trail Creek, that, that might be the best option for the town, you know, from a, from a cost standpoint, I would think. Depending on how much they're charged for that person's time.
Yeah.
We typically, I would think, you know, I'm just being honest here. I, I think their hourly rate would probably be less than, than some, we would have to, so.
You know, if they create this position within, in the building inspection department, then, you know, there might not be any costs at all, but I have no, and they have no idea when that's, if and when that's even going to happen.
Okay, so that might not happen until after these other?
Yeah, you know, that could be two, three years from now. It's, you know, there's just so much up in the air, and that's what makes me leery about this. You know, I was expecting something a little bit more concrete as to, you know, and I was shocked by the fact that they didn't want to do enforcement, because, you know, that's part of the program.
Yeah.
Kind of a big piece, yes.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay, any other council comments or opinions there?
No.
Are we all in agreement that we should just stay the course for the time being then? I see a lot of nodding. Okay, so there we have it, and I guess we'll just stay the course and kind of see, you know, where the road takes us.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Take care.
You too.
All right, moving on to our town attorney, Mr. Willoughby. Chris, you're muted. Do you have anything to report for us tonight? And we'll come back to Chris and see if he unmutes and joins the conversation back there. Mr. Haas, do you have any, any engineering reports for the town tonight?
Just real briefly, the, about the only thing that we've done, no, not about, the only thing that we've done since the December meeting has been a little bit of coordination work between Josh Lean in particular, and John Doyle and his office regarding the preparation of the first call for 2022 Community Crossings Matching Grant Program for
Okay.
improvements. And where it stands is that, that because Doyle Associates had done so much of the work up to this point in preparing the pavement asset management plan and updating that and things like that, that they would continue with assisting the town with preparing the cost estimate and whatever else is needed for submitting the grant application, which is due by January 29th, I believe.
Okay.
After that happened, we stepped back and, and that was a few weeks ago.
Okay.
Haven't been involved since then.
All right, so maybe we'll have Doyle and Associates do this first one, and then depending on round two, if they release a second round of funding, then we'll have, have your office step in for that one as well.
Okay, yeah, they typically do two rounds a year.
Right.
One is, it's, it's not always at the exact same time, it's usually somewhere in July, August right now.
Okay, fantastic, well, I'm sure we'll have other projects for you as time moves on.
Sounds like, sounds like Oriole Trail might be one of them, huh?
That would be fantastic. That would be fantastic, thank you. Mr. Willoughby?
I'm here, sorry, I could not, I was frozen.
That's all right, we're glad to have you back. Do you have a report for us for this month?
Nothing to report today, but I do want to say that I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for selecting me to represent a town that's certainly near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything from the park department?
No.
Building inspector?
No.
Hearing nothing, moving on to planning and zoning? It's like no report, okay, and our police department would be next.
Good evening, everybody. I've got two quick things for you, one, as you're aware, every year we're required to do 24 hours of continued education, and once again, Michigan City has invited us to their in-service, we'll be taking advantage of that. That usually gives us 14 to 16 hours, and then the rest of the practicals, which are given the handgun range, driving the cars, physical tactics. So we'll, we'll start the year outright, get some of that knocked out. The only other thing I've got is recently I received an email from Captain Andy Heineck, Littleport County Sheriff's Department. Now I just want to share to you, and it, it kind of brings to light just the type of relationship that not only we have with the individual departments that surround us and that we touch, but also with the individuals of those departments, and you bear with me, I have a short email I'd like to read. Starts out, "Steve, this morning I had a pursuit on US Highway 12 where the suspect went into Shady Oak Mobile Home Park and eventually fled from the vehicle. Both Long Beach PD Officer Seitz and I tased him with no effect before he retreated into his mobile home. We followed him and he was tased several more times, and a fight ensued with him in the small living room. Officer Chris Southwell heard our struggle and responded to assist without being asked. This is yet another great example of the working relationship we have with each other, and hearing those backup units coming when they need them the most was a great sense of release, of relief. Please pass my appreciation on to Officer Southwell for his assist this morning. Have a safe weekend, Andy." It just goes to show that, you know, we, we do these things, and sometimes we, we have to make that on the fly decision, and I also commend Deputy Southwell for stepping forward when he heard that there were some other officers that were having a hard time with a suspect, so I just want to make sure he gets his kudos. That's all I have.
Definitely, please tell him thank you from all of us as well.
Yeah, by all means.
That's, that's a big deal, okay, thank you for your report.
Yep, do you guys have anything for me?
I do not at this time.
As always, we, we truly appreciate your support and it means a lot to us, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to our street department.
Uh, we're just trying to get some other things handled. There's a few things in disarray when I took over. We had that flammable room, we since updated that, got some new shelving in there, or shelving that's been sitting at the creek for a while. Put that in there, got the new door hung today, actually, so it's fireproofed again. Uh, we're, we're in the process, I got actually overhead door coming tomorrow to try to get us some more insulated value on our doors, because all the seals are shot on the doors. Try to get that taken care of, hopefully we can save a little money there, you know, with heat going outside instead of staying inside the building. Aside that, we've been just trying to keep the streets clear, we communicate with the PD quite often, seeing as most of us are kind of out of town now. But, and you know, you can go five feet and the weather's totally different. So we're trying to make sure we keep up on everything. We just lost one of the other employees, the young man, Trent. He took a job at the candy factory at Albany's, so he took a full-time job, can't put anybody down for doing better for themselves. So I'm going to speak with Josh Lean tomorrow about getting ad running and or try to figure out some other avenues of advertising to get more help. So we do have to replace him, but besides that, I think everything else is going pretty smoothly.
All right.
Any questions?
Joe, what's on our leaf machine?
The leaf machine, it is still at the manufacturer. They're still in the process of taking care of fixing the entry chute on it, and then it should be coming back in the next couple of weeks. That's the last I heard about a week ago.
Oh, that should be covered under warranty?
There, there's one part that's not covered under warranty, and that is the hydraulics for the jack itself, the box that protects that got crushed, and it also cut one of the hoses, and that was just because of how it's, how close it was mounted to the back of our truck. Where, in relation on the tongue where it's mounted, so that we will be having fixed, but besides that, everything else that they're doing with the actual chute and all that is all under warranty.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I am getting those maintenance and monthly run reports, I already did the portable generator as we spoke about in December. That portable generator, made up the run report on that for running it every month. The, um, I did not look at the town generator due to it being so nicely cold out still. And I will get with Steve about seeing, about being able to be added to when it does run, so that, you know, I can get a notification on that, that way, you know, hopefully we can make it some sort of a log for that too.
Great, real quick, Joe, it's, it's been a while since I've been in the shop back there. What kind of lighting do we have in there? Is it fluorescent tubes?
Mostly.
Mostly?
Yes, it is, the back, the cold storage, two of the fixtures, I, or three of the fixtures are already switched over to LED. Just bypass ballast, went to LED, especially with it being cold area, you know, they turn on. Uh, but the rest of the shop is mostly still all fluorescent tube.
Just for giggles, sorry for that. Did they, if you can, look into, like I said, at your spare time, a cost factor of possibly replacing those lights with LEDs?
Yeah, you and I stood outside and talked about that last month, I remember that, and yeah, we can, totally.
As long as we're having garage door come in, you know, for seals and that stuff, it'll make a little bit more sense saving a dime here or there for that lighting area. I mean, look at LEDs and also with that, maybe motion detectors for the lights itself.
Instead of leaving them lit 24, or not 24/7, but when we're there, yeah, that makes a lot of sense too.
Someone that you flip the switch, they, they, granted for half dollars, if that can save us a few bucks that time. I know some of them are kind of pricey, the ones that I've installed, but it all depends on what we go, what you go after, too. You can come up with, that would be greatly appreciated.
Not a problem, I'll start looking into that, as you said, in all the spare time. It'll, it'll go on the list with Oriole Trail.
Any other questions for Joe?
Yeah, that's all I got, and real quick, Joe, the couple of times I've seen the salt and plow trucks come by, once, well, the first time it was like mid-morning and early afternoon on a Saturday, bam, roads were excellent. Granted, the major roadways, that's a plus, the side, we do, we could do with them. But so far the guys are doing real great, pass that upon to them.
I'll definitely will, not an issue, thank you.
Scott, you take the words right out of my mouth with things like that, so, thank you for, thank you for making sure to mention that. All right.
Doing a real great job.
Thank you, we appreciate the support.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you, Joe. All right, anything for Nersy?
I'm sorry, Jay, can we back up just a minute?
Sure.
Uh, two, two things, also, since we brought up streets, we need to put Bluebird on that list, it's in horrible shape. 200 block, but also, Joe, I do not have access to that app that you're talking about, you'll have to unfortunately get with the dealer.
Oh, okay, no problem, I, I thought that we had discussed that, and I may have misspoke on that, that's not an issue.
No, you're, yeah, just, just a heads up, because I will forget, like, I forgot to tell you about the light bulbs in my garage door.
Not a problem.
All right, moving, moving on to old business, we have 1929 East Cool Spring. I don't know who has the update on that.
I put that on the list because it, I wanted to let everybody know that Bill Herb, I did finish and release the judgment on the property after the cleanup. So it's complete for now.
Okay, wonderful, hopefully we don't have to do that again.
Question. Question for you, do we need or can we or should we do a reinspection on that property every quarter year or every half? To make sure?
I think that responsibility really falls more on, on the estate, not as much the town, I mean, we'll, we'll get complaints about it if it becomes out of compliance again.
Whoever it was that complained about it to begin with, I'm sure we'll complain again if it gets out of hand.
I rest assured that they will. Uh, moving on to new business, we have the salary revision for 2021. And Josh Lean, I'm sure you have those figures that you, for the revision, for the salary revision for 2021?
Yes, you guys all have a copy of it.
It should be ordinance number 1-2021.
Right, it's just a revision to it as per the state board of accounts for the adjustment of the vacation buyback.
Okay, and that was for both Deputy Corp, I'm sorry, yeah, Deputy Corpano and, and Marshall Dick.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm guessing we just need a motion to approve the revision, right, Mr. Willoughby?
I, I would, my opinion is that any ordinance is if you want to pass them, you need a unanimous vote to consider and pass it in the same evening, and then a two-thirds vote after that. So if you want to suspend the rule, someone can make a motion, and you need a unanimous vote of those present, because you are amending that ordinance, so technically approving an ordinance, and so that will be on this one end as well as the next one.
Okay, so we should read them and then make the motion, but table it until next month?
You don't have to table it at all, no, you just have to, unless you, you need unanimous of those present.
Okay.
And a two-thirds vote, which is two-thirds vote of those elected, so you would need a unanimous vote technically if, if tonight, if that were going to pass.
Okay, all right, so if everyone on the council can read through All right. So if everyone on the council can read through ordinance number one dash 21, the only adjustments that that makes would be the unused vacation time that we've paid out for both Steve Dick at $5,753 and for Nick Corpano at $1,223.53. And those are both a one-time payment. But those will be added to the salary ordinance to increase it by those amounts. Do we have a motion to accept this ordinance as written? Or as amended, I should say?
I move to accept the ordinance as amended and written.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Josh, if you want to take roll, we can do the vote.
Okay, Ms. Eve?
Hi.
Ms. Graylick?
Hi.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on then to salary ordinance 2020 for the 2022, which is one dash 2022 in the front of that packet. And the numbers should mirror what you have for the the year prior, as we were not able to do pay raises this year. Any questions or comments on ordinance number one dash 2022 from the council? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this ordinance?
I move ordinance number one dash 2022.
Thank you, Pete. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sharon.
Mr. Silk Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Keith?
Yes, aye, thank you. All right, and now we need appointments for the redevelopment commission. Anyone on the council have any appointments for the redevelopment commission? I believe that we can appoint ourselves, correct, Mr. Willoughby?
Yes, you can appoint.
And I, so we'll need a motion to appoint the redevelopment commission. To make appointments, crickets.
So you just need a motion for someone to appoint the county or the city council or the town council as the redevelopment commission as as it sits?
Correct.
I will make that motion to appoint the Trail Creek Town Council as the redevelopment commission.
Thank you, Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott.
Ms. Graylick?
Aye.
Mrs. Keith?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. We also need to to elect officers for the year, correct? So we'll need to add that under new business as well. Since I am sitting as the president, I will back up for a minute and and open the floor for nominations for president.
I move to nominate Jenny Heath as president of the town council.
I'll second that.
I'll accept the nomination. Thank you.
We need to go.
I can't vote for myself, so you should have to take roll, but.
Have to take roll. Okay, Mrs. Graylick?
Aye.
And 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 I made the motion and Scott seconded it, so I think that's pretty much.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your confidence, everybody. Thank you, and for our vice president.
I'll make a motion that Pete Pizarro fill the role as vice president of town council.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Graylick?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Keith?
I.
Hi.
I will accept that nomination.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Pete.
Yep, congratulations.
All right, am I forgetting anything else that we need to add to the agenda there, Josh, for those those items we needed to vote on?
I don't think so.
Any public comment this evening? So we have a few guests. Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to the clerk's comment.
I'm sorry, I'm readmitting Chris Willoughby to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, so year-end billing is done. The refuse is closed for the year. The billing has been done. Hopefully, everybody's received their bill in the mail. We are working on getting a new phone system where the town can come up to the center and actually transfer phone calls. I am working on the annual financial report, which should be done in the next few weeks, and then also the W2s have been completed. So if you guys don't get it, let me know. I can reprint you one.
I did receive mine. I'm hoping everyone else has as well. The phone system, do you have to enter into a contract with that, or is that?
No, there's no contract.
Okay.
It's actually saving us about $150 a month, combined with three bills. It's through a company called Onsip, which is one of the top 10 weight systems. I'm working with our IT person to get it done. We are working with Steve to make sure that he gets the phones that he needs. And I'm just looking forward to be able to maintain and manage the calls that come through the main hub by transferring to our building inspectors and to our other two departments.
Okay. Anyone have questions or comments for Josh Lean?
Josh, we're not going to lose no phone numbers, are we?
No, we're porting them.
Okay.
They're being ported, and Town Hall currently has three phones. The street department has one. I allotted two for the police station as they currently have, but there's some feedback coming back. I do have an extra phone for Chief's department, and if he needs a fourth phone, we'll certainly get him one.
And then is that, does that go through your server then? Because my my only concern would be if your server goes down.
No, it does not. No, doesn't.
Doesn't get affected by that at all? Okay, just want to make sure that that's that's good.
No, we don't need any problems with that server. Oh, and and also, just an update. We did actually ADIT. I had to move all of our equipment to the back, so we no longer have any dangerous waters that were stepping over or hanging above our heads.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Josh Lean, what was the name of that company, the phones?
Onsip. And it's through IT-centric, Centric IT. PJ, he's our IT person. He has been for the last five years, or actually, less than that, previous to or after Bradley Hutchinson. I can't remember what year that was, pre-COVID.
Okay.
That's.
Okay. All right. My only other issue that I would like, and then maybe this should go under council comment as well, but Josh Lean, if we could all have a copy of the updated budget for this year, I know that I saw the one that was read, but I'd like to have a final copy of what we actually put into place.
Right, now. I sure can. Absolutely not a problem. The issue here is is that we're dealing with the end of the year. So there's an annual financial report that's done through Gateway, is where the budgets were submitted last year. But if you're looking for a report from fund, those budgets can't be updated until the end of report is done. So I can reprint what we submitted through Gateway and approved for you, or you'll have to wait a week or two for me to finish the AFR so that the current budgets are updated in the system. That's just the process.
Let's wait until the year end is done, because I'd like to see what there is currently and and not just what we read. I want to see the actual.
Sure, no problem.
Any council comments this evening?
Do we provide access to Port County with a link from our recorded Zoom meeting to air on the television?
I thought about that as I was standing in or sitting in the pickup line at my son's school and thought, how does how does that work? I did leave a note on the door that just said our meeting will be Zoomed tonight. Probably should have called them, just didn't, just didn't think about it until I was in line to pick up my kit.
I I actually did. I I'm actually on the Alco Board, and I let Drew white the new director of operations there. I let him know. I I didn't find out about the Zoom meeting till late later this afternoon, actually this evening. I wasn't included on the text for some reason. I don't know what happened.
Really?
Yeah, my name wasn't on the text that you sent out earlier. So I did let Drew know, and he was actually the one who was asking me if we have a link to provide for the for the meeting so that it can be aired on television.
Do you have an email address for them? Because I can definitely.
I do. I do, and I can provide. I can I can send.
Awesome. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, any other council comments or questions for discussion this evening?
Nope.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion where you adjourn.
I need to do real call for this.
Yeah, silly as it is.
No, it's okay. Ms. Graylick, are you ready to adjourn?
Oh, yes, okay.
Mr. Keith?
Hi.
Okay.
All right, so our next meeting will be in February of 2022. The exact date would be February 15th, right after Valentine's Day for all of us. In the meantime, I hope everyone stays safe and stays healthy, and we'll see you in February.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.